The June 10, 2024, Twalton City Council Meeting. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Our first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Hillier tonight.
Please stand, face the flag, put your right hand over your heart, and join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Council Hillier. It brings us to announcements, and our first announcement is National Pollinator Week Presentation and Proclamation. Welcome, Beth.
Nope, it was on before. Hi, I'm Vice Chair of the T-Park Twalton Parks and Recreation Committee, Beth Ditman. I'm here to speak with you this evening about Pollinator Week. Next slide, please. As we look at being a bee city, which we are, and T-Park sits as the bee council, just as we sit as the tree council for Tree City USA, what bee city is, is providing a framework so that communities can work together, so we can create multiple cities in a corridor, so that we can provide the habitat that pollinators need in order to stay alive. That means having native plants, providing nest sites, and ultimately reducing the use of pesticides. Twalton, as you know, is a bee city, and that makes a commitment so that we can have our not-native pollinators. And we have a resolution, which will be read this evening by Council Brooks, and this presentation to accompany it for you. Next slide, please, Bates. This year, there were a number of pollinator events and activities that happened in our community, which are all very exciting to those of us who are for the bees and for the trees. 2,500 pollinator plants were planted in our community. That equates out to over 29,000 square feet of habitat that was enhanced in honor of our pollinators. We had 13 planting events and activities, and you saw just under 700, 687 volunteers participating in those activities as well. The community benefits, next slide, please, Bates. Thank you. Of our lovely pollinators is, and I say this every year to you, but if you like to eat, then you like pollinators. We had an event at my children's community garden at their school, and the woman who, we have a beekeeper, and bees at our school, and she did such a beautiful job of describing, "If you're a plant and in the ground, you can only just go so far, and the bees help you to talk and spread your pollen from thing to thing." So the community benefits of pollinators are that we ensure the survival of animal species. We build a community locally and nationally, again, with that corridor of people in our greater world. We improve local food production, again, that part about eating. We support small businesses. We address pest problems with fewer pesticides, and we heighten the awareness of biological diversity. Next slide, please, Bates. Pollination is an important part of the food-making process and the life process. It's a stage in the life cycle of all flowering plants. Pollinators are critical to the native species and ecosystem. An estimated one-third of all food and beverages is delivered by pollinators. And in the U.S., pollination produces nearly $20 billion worth of products annually. So if you don't care about bees or food, you could care about money. That might be your appeal as well. How you, council, and members of our community can help is continuing to help pollinators by planting pollinator-friendly gardens, and ultimately, the very important part is also reducing the use of pesticides to support pollinators. I will say that these slides are so adorable and so well-made, but it also speaks lots to the adorable, cute pollinators. And I always want to give a shout-out to the ugly ones that we think are pests as well. Flies are pollinators, beetles are pollinators. The ones you don't like also help. Right before you smack that fly later. Last slide, please, Bates. There's lots of ways for you, council members, and also our community, to get involved in. One of them is our Backyard Habitat Certification Program. A number of members of our community have run that already. The Friends of the Trees, who obviously are partners with us as we deal much of our planting in the city. Byram has a school pollinator garden, thanks to Kelly Horstford started that up. Nationwide Parks for Pollinators, and then the Bee City USA. Again, Twalton is a bee city, very exciting one. Last slide is just if you have questions or comments for me, and I may call in the bigger guns of Ross if he has, if he has questions that are outside my pay grade.
Questions or comments for Beth? Council Brooks?
I had a couple. One is, we went to an outdoor event for Mitch Charter School, and their community outreach person was interested in helping raise awareness of our bee city status. They do a lot of, they're an agricultural magnet school, so would they reach out to who?
Yeah, they should probably reach out. Come on up. I'm guessing, I'm not here. Hold on, let's see how I do. I'm guessing that they should reach out to Ross or Rich, and that they would also very, always welcome, as is all community, to the T-Park meeting to talk more about what we do as a bee city, but...
Perfect answer.
Ding.
And then my other question was, I was wondering how we're doing with our integrated pollen, pest management program.
Yeah, so we are in a trial phase right now, and we are tinkering with different products. We are moving away from glyphosate-based products in our parks, and we are utilizing, we've utilized several different products and are testing those to see their effectiveness. In some of the products, we found you have to use more of the other product, and so that's why we've tried multiple different products. So we're continuing that testing.
And then, is there a way that the Backyard Habitat Certification Program, like I just started doing that, I have a lot more bees in my yard now. Is there a way that, I just am wondering how we can enrich the bee city, what the next steps are about raising awareness and integrating as a community with our status?
What I'm hearing is potentially a question within that question of, is like, is there a way that we can get more information from Backyard Habitat into the community, potentially inviting them here for a presentation or further information shared? Sure that we could have?
That's a great idea, Beth. We'd be happy to extend the invitation for a presentation.
Yeah, or just if it could feed the program that we have somehow.
Absolutely.
For the bee city, yeah.
What's neat about Backyard Habitat, if, and we've invited them to our home, they have lots of, there's multiple layers too, so what can seem really overwhelming to, you know, a non-master gardener, somebody who's not willing to, you know, they came into our yard and said, "You need to kill off this entire wall of laurel." And my husband said, "No." But I was like, "Okay, but what do you have behind door number two, Johnny?" And there's other options and levels that you can still become pollinator-friendly, habitat-friendly.
Yeah, and I just wanted to acknowledge Beth and our whole T-Park committee, the work and dedication focused on this work. Just wouldn't be possible without that body and that group and their leadership. And then additionally, that we have an amazing group of volunteers in our community that make the actual plantings possible, and not only volunteers, but our staff that lead those efforts.
Thank you. Thank you both for your leadership and looking forward.
Well, thank you so much for this. I am a big fan of this program. At all of our facilities we work at, we have our own bee hives as well. And for all of our HAs, we even hand out seed packets that are pollinator-friendly to encourage. We do Ladybug Release Day. We do all kinds of things to encourage this, the pollinating. So thank you very much for updating this. It's a very exciting program. There's more that can be done. Going towards, talking about the integrated pest management, have you partnered with private sectors who have done a lot of work on integrated pest management programs, Salmon Safe program, things that would hugely advance this process for you? Have you guys considered that?
We have not yet. No, there are, you're right, there are a number of resources out there, and to develop the, an IPM, a proper IPM for our community, really would involve our entire community and a lot of stakeholders, including private businesses. And so when we get to that stage, we will absolutely reach out to them.
One item that we have learned, and there's much information that the use of organic products are super healthy, but because you have to use more of them, it becomes toxic, which is, it's a happy balance that we have to try to balance. Thank you so much for coming.
Council President Pratt?
Hi, and thank you for all your great work on this. I was going to go back to what Council Brooks said. We were at the Mitch Charter School Field Day, and I think it's their second, one of the grades, actually teach, or kindergarten, they teach about the whole bee process. So I'm just throwing a suggestion out there, but I think it'd be great to get kids more involved, so something like the Arbor Day contest with, or something like that, to get kids more involved and educate them would be great in the future.
Other questions, comments? Well, two other cute things that Beth didn't mention are butterflies and hummingbirds are also included. So whenever, I love Garden Corner, because they're on top of it. When you ask about, okay, what is this going to attract? They can tell you, and that's what I try to strive for, is all three. Because some people are freaked out by bees, but they have no problem with butterflies and hummingbirds. But they also are included in the chain.
If I may, another thing that we can do for pollinators is very simple, and it's called dark skies at night. So if you're the person who likes to, we want to obviously encourage safety with lights on and having, you know, a neighborhood feel. And at the same time, when you go to bed, if you turn your lights out, if you have lights in your garden or your patio, turn those lights out. It's part of the circadian rhythm of bugs as well. And if we always have lights on, then that actually throws off their own little natural ways. Turn your lights out. Let the bugs sleep.
Council Brooks?
All right, proclamation. Declaring the week of June 17 through June 23, 2024 as... Should turn on my thing. Sorry. Declaring the week of June 17 to June 23, 2024, as National Pollinator Week in the city of Twalton. Whereas pollinators, such as thousands of species of bees, are essential partners in producing much of our food supply, and whereas pollinators provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy, diverse ecosystems in towns and cities, and whereas pollination plays a vital role for the trees and plants of our community, enhancing our quality of life and creating recreational and economic development opportunities, and whereas the city of Twalton manages parks, public landscaping, and other public lands that include greenways, national, natural areas, and wildlife habitats, and whereas the city of Twalton provides recommendations to developers and residents regarding landscaping to promote wise conservation stewardship, including the protection of pollinators and maintenance of their habitats, now therefore be it proclaimed by the city council of the city of Twalton, Oregon, that the city of Twalton designates the week of June 17 through 23, 2024, as National Pollinator Week in the city of Twalton. All are urged to recognize this observance and support efforts to protect and plant pollinators. The city of Twalton supports Bee City USA certified affiliate status in their recognition of the value of pollinators by proclaiming June 17 through 23, 2024, as National Pollinator Week in Twalton, introduced and adopted this 10th day of June, 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. Announcement number two is a proclamation declaring June 18, 2024, as Juneteenth Day in the city of Twalton. June 19? Well, mine says 18, which is, it's a typo. Led by Council Hillier.
Thank you. Well, let's see what this says. Okay, because we don't have a presentation, I'll just share a couple things. Juneteenth is an annual commemoration of the end of slavery in the United States after the Civil War. And in 2021, President Biden made Juneteenth, which falls on June 19, a federal holiday after interest was renewed during the summer of 2020 and the nationwide protests that followed for the police killing of Black Americans, including George Floyd and Breonna Taylor. The color to wear is red because of the blood that was lost. And if you're interested in being involved in a local Juneteenth celebration, the city of Tigard, in partnership with the Tiger Twalton School District, is having an event this Saturday, and you can find it on their website. So with that, I will read the proclamation. Okay. Proclamation, declaring June 19, 2024, as Juneteenth Day in the city of Twalton. Whereas the city council's 2030 vision is for Twalton to be an inclusive community that promotes equity, diversity, and access in creating a meaningful quality of life for everyone. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1, 1863, declaring enslaved people as free, paving the way for the passage of the 13th Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States. And whereas Texas was the last of the Confederate states to receive orders requiring the end of slavery, with Union troops announcing that all slaves were free in Galveston, Texas on June 19, 1865. And whereas June 19 has a special meaning to African-Americans and has been celebrated by the Black American community for more than 150 years. And whereas Juneteenth celebrates the end of slavery and recognizes the high price Black Americans have paid for civil rights and equal access. And whereas June 19 is an occasion to remember and reflect on the significant ways that African-Americans have enriched society through their contributions. And whereas Twalton is a community that includes values and welcomes diversity in our community, and we believe that the rich diversity of communities in Twalton is one of our greatest strengths. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the city council of the city of Twalton, Oregon, that June 19, 2024, is recognized as Juneteenth in the city of Twalton. The community is encouraged to respect and honor our diverse community, celebrate, and build a culture of inclusivity and acceptance. Introduced and adopted on this 10th day of June, 2024, city of Twalton, Oregon.
Council Hillier. That brings us to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there is anyone in the room who would like to address the council, I'll take them first, and then we'll move on to Zoom. I have one sign-up sheet for Jen, Miguel, Gwendolyn, and Chris. Come on up. And since you're a group, go ahead, and you've got six minutes instead of three.
Ready, go. Well, I'm going to start, because I started this whole mess behind me.
Go ahead, just state your first name, each of you.
First name is Jennifer.
Wait, let Bates do his thing. Here you go.
There we go. Okay. Good evening. My name's Jennifer. I am the president of our local, your general unit. All these people behind me are here in support of what we're going to try to explain. This is the first time ever that I've been up in front of, actually, that's not true. This is the second time I've been up in front of council. The first time was back in 2015. I actually was a police officer here. I started in 2015, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about me, because I've been around. Was a cop for a while, then I came back in the general unit in Public Works. I've been here almost 20 years. I've been the president nine years, maybe, I think. So I'm the one that started this whole mess behind me and why I'm up here today. I have a couple people here that want to say a couple things, but I'm going to start it off. All these people behind me, maybe you recognize some of them, but they're part of our general unit, and they're here because they love working here, and they're in support of our union and what we're trying to do. So I'm going to just read my, parts of my letter. I kind of highlighted a couple things I just want to share. And I don't know, do you guys get a copy? Did you get a chance to read them yet? Okay. Okay. So, Twalton and its residents appreciate us, respect us, love our work, love our library, love our parks, love our streets, and love the water that pours out of their tap. We make you guys look really awesome. We do, right? It's in your, it's in our survey, it's in your budget, it's all over. Like, we are cool. I'm just going to say it, we are. We do good work. Your budget theme was make it about the people. Show us the people that do the work. So we are here to show you that some of us are here supporting this cause that we're all here together for. We, as you know, have an open contract, and we are trying to express that we would like a fair COLA. And we're struggling to do that, and we're here to show you guys our concern that we do care for the city, we love the city, and we are just asking to review and look at the information for a fair COLA and to help us with our insurance increases. I think a couple of you want to say a couple things?
I am Gwendolyn Carpenter. I am a library assistant at the Twalton Public Library. I've been an employee of the city of Twalton since 2014. My family moved to Twalton in 1999 when I was six years old. I am now 32. In the past 25 years, Twalton has expanded greatly, and that expansion was only possible because of the skilled and hard-working people that are employed by the city. The satisfaction survey respondents would not rate Twalton's quality of life so highly without us, but can we enjoy that same quality of life? Does our median income approach the median of our community? Even if, and then skip some of it, but I want to be able to live comfortably and be able to participate in Twalton's economy without having to worry. But even if I lived that life I want, where I didn't have to worry, I would still have written this letter to the bargaining unit, and I would still be here talking to you, arguing for a COLA, because I want that same comfortable and secure life for all of my fellow employees who are losing money as cost of living increases and paychecks don't. A cost of living adjustment will even out this discrepancy, giving our paycheck back its spending power. Without a COLA, the money we agreed to work for is stolen from us. A city is a community of people. The city government exists to serve these people. If the city government doesn't treat their employees and staff with care and respect, is that government doing its job? Why would we stay if we cannot count on our employers to treat us with basic respect and pay us fairly for our work?
Hi, my name is Miguel Gonzalez Alfaro. I've been here 17 years. And to add to what both of my colleagues have said, you have received many comments throughout the years stating the park services here are one of the best. I don't want to toot my own horn, or ours, but we have fantastic parks throughout this region. I get different comments from different cities and folks that come here because they enjoy our parks. But at the same time, we do our best. We are busting our butt out there to do that and show that, because we are proudful of what we do here in Twalton, but it is getting harder and harder just to buy a gallon of milk, fill up your gas, just to come into work. We're not trying to bust the bank. We're not trying to ask for more. We just want to live, not survive, live. It's hard. This economy is not getting any better for any of us, especially for the lower end or not at the top. We don't make those higher wages. That's what we're asking for.
I'm not sure if you guys know, but the majority of this unit, which I've asked the majority of them, this unit, we live paycheck to paycheck, and we have been living paycheck to paycheck for about three years now, and it's getting harder and harder. You guys know, you guys live the same reality we do.
Don't worry about it.
Okay, thanks. Whew, I thought I was in trouble.
Hi, my name's Chris. I'm engineering tech two and city inspector. I just celebrated my two-year anniversary here, and I just celebrated my year-and-a-half anniversary of going to the food bank. It's, I'm, we're a one-income family. I work side jobs, I sell things, I do whatever I can to get by. I love working for the city of Twalton. This is the seventh municipality I've worked for, and it's the best one I've ever worked for. I love my management team, but I'm starting to not love my management team based on what I'm hearing from negotiations, and it's, we're all just struggling. Like, gas has gone up, groceries have gone up. I can't even remember the last time I filled a grocery cart, probably four years ago. But the wages are not keeping up, and it's crazy.
Did Jen want to wrap it up?
Yeah. Thank you for listening to us. We just, I wouldn't come up here in front of you guys unless we were struggling. And we just want the fair COLA and for the city to meet us halfway on our insurance increases. We don't want anything, we aren't asking for the moon, just fairness. And thanks for listening. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks.
All right. Anyone else in council chamber who'd like to come up for public comment? Is anyone in Zoom? Okay. Give folks a chance to leave. All right. That brings us to our consent agenda. These are items considered routine. They'll be adopted by one motion unless someone in the council would like an item removed or heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of three items. Item number one, consideration for approval of the work session in regular meeting minutes of May 27, 2024. Item number two, consideration for approval of a new liquor license application for the Black Wine Market LLC. And item number three, consideration of Resolution Number 5778-24, authorizing the city to enter into a sole-source energy performance savings contract with InPipe Energy, Inc. and Tapany, Inc. Would any councilor like an item removed and heard later tonight?
So I would like to have Resolution Number 5778-24 removed. Consent agenda?
Okay. Any other removals? Motion?
I motion that we adopt the first two items of the consent agenda as read. Second?
I have a motion and a second to adopt the first two items of the consent agenda this evening. Any discussions on those motions? All of the favors say aye? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. All right, that brings us to special reports. Item number one is outside agency grant worthy, Borland Free Clinic. Welcome, Jordan. You not talked out from yesterday?
I'm not.
It's part of the job, right? Keep talking.
Okay, greetings, everyone. My name is Jordan. I am the executive director of Borland Free Clinic. Been in that role since the beginning of 2022. Prior to that, I was a part-time staff member, raising money and working in communications for the same entity, as well as some other gigs. So I am pleased to be here tonight. I'm pleased to report on our work, including our massive build-out renovation project that we just completed and celebrated yesterday. And just to thank you all for your ongoing support. I think we are in our fourth year of being a grant recipient from the city. So I reckon most of you know who we are, but just to recap a little bit, we're a faith-based nonprofit offering free medical services to underserved and under-insured individuals, not just in Twalton, but in the South Metro region is where we kind of aim to serve. We, I will say however, that a majority of our patients do come from Washington County, and amongst those, a significant amount come from the city. Probably estimate around 20 to 30 percent. Short history, we are not that old as an organization. We were founded as an idea in the early 2010s from members of Rolling Hills Community Church, where we are still located. We didn't open our doors, however, until 2017, when we started as a diabetes, pre-diabetes education clinic. The following year, we started, when our medical director came on board, we started offering primary care services, and that remains our principal offering today, despite the fact that we do much more than that currently. I will overview our services real briefly, just to understand. I mean, all of us have a reference point for healthcare in our own lives, for primary care doctors in particular, and we function very similar to that. That said, we do offer urgent or walk-up visits. We are able to accommodate, you know, other kinds of things that folks might need, and that includes our specialty care offerings. So in addition to your general checkup or urgent need or chronic care management, we're able to offer women's healthcare, specifically... able to offer women's healthcare, specifically gynecology, mental health care, physical therapy, and continue with our diabetes education. Most recently, we have started to partner with additional outside agencies who are equipped with mobile units to come to our facility in order to serve our patients with expertise beyond our own offerings. So that includes dental care, vision care, and mammogram screenings. Most recently, we partnered with Medical Teams International Dental Van. They had been coming to the church location, but we did not administrate that, and now we do, as it's mostly aligned with our services as opposed to other services that exist on our facility, including the food pantry, as you know. It takes a village, as they say, to not just raise children, but to provide healthcare to the community, and so I just want to highlight all of the partners who make our work possible. As a nonprofit, we have no revenue sources outside of individuals and grants, and, and then, of course, all the in-kind services that allow us to keep our overhead low. So we are lucky enough to have hundreds of, over a hundred volunteers come through our doors every single year, but we also have other agencies or organizations that, that work with us in order to provide to the community. So that just gives you a sample of, on the right-hand side there, all the, all the entities that support our work, and we are proud to work alongside them. Just to get a sense for the extent of our work, these are numbers on the left from last calendar year. Only operating eight hours a week, we were able to see over four hundred unique individuals through approximately eight hundred and fifty visits. That's about eight patients per four-hour shift, which at that time, we were offering two of. The vast majority are uninsured completely, though we do serve some underinsured folks who can't afford their co-pays or are waiting for availability for their primary care assignment, if, for example, they have recently applied for the Oregon Health Plan. In our electronic health record system, we are, I think, now at thirteen hundred total patients that we've seen in the history of our existence. I mentioned the volunteers, which collectively provided us with over six thousand hours of service, and there's a dollar figure attached to that. It's high. And we primarily serve, or at least demographically, the majority of our patients are Hispanic and Spanish-speaking. For them, we offer onsite interpretation. So we make a big impact and strive to make a big impact in people's lives, and I was just, got a text, in fact, from my medical director, who was giving me a picture from our celebration yesterday of a patient that she's seen for five years straight, including his wife, who still lives in Mexico and was here visiting. And through a referral that we were able to offer him, he was able to have his tonsils removed recently, and he was there to thank her that he could sleep better, and his wife was saying she's sleeping better, too. Not surprisingly, but just gives you a sense for our overall impact. A year ago last week, we launched publicly a capital fundraising effort to support the renovation of our clinic. I believe, I, yeah, I have pictures, a few pictures here of what our clinic used to look like. Just imagine a big room, almost a hangar even. We, you know, Rolling Hills, the lower level, is not finished, at least most spaces of it are not finished, and they graciously allowed us to operate out of there. You can see the one room that was in the space in the background there. That was our storage closet, but behind these fine volunteers here are, were our curtain, makeshift exam rooms, and we, through this space, were able, in furniture, to figure out a way to have a waiting room and to have, not just exam rooms, but, you know, desk area and work areas and so forth. And so we operate out of this space, and what we didn't have was a dedicated entrance. We had to enter through the back, through the food pantry's entrance. We didn't have air conditioning or heat. We did not have bathrooms, and we did not have the kind of amenities that one would want to have when they go to visit their doctor. That includes the ability to have private conversations with their doctor and just to receive procedures, like pap smears, in private. And so it was uncomfortable for some, and we wanted to correct that, but most importantly, I'm sort of stalled here. I don't know. Oh, there we go. Most importantly, and what we wanted to do was, as I said a lot yesterday, and I've said a lot recently, is just communicate to our patients that they deserve as quality of care as anyone, and that even though they're receiving free care, that our facilities communicate to them their worth, and that they're able to be comfortable in our space. So thanks to the generous donation of many individuals and some private foundations, we raised in the last calendar, in the last year or so, about eight hundred thousand dollars to contribute to what we had already raised, so about one point five million dollars to fund this renovation and expansion. Our footprint is larger than it was previously, so that we could have the facility that we do now. These are renderings. I'm trying to get to what this space looks now. This, this slideshow is a few weeks old, but it is even more complete now. There are, that lab area on the left-hand side, on the lower-left-hand side, is full of testing equipment. We have new logo and signs in the lobby there, and furniture, of course, to accommodate the space, which we are just really pleased to have and to offer to the community at large. So this was our celebration yesterday. This is our new, you know, partnership with Medical Teams. I mentioned that. And, and, you know, I just want to, again, say thank you, and I want to just honor you all and your support of organizations like us. I know others are recipients as well, and just thank you for allowing us to serve the community in the way that we do. We consider it privilege, not a burden, and it's great to do it in conjunction with like-minded folks who, who partner with us. Any, any questions I can offer?
Questions or comments for Jordan?
Just would, I'd like to invite anybody who wants to visit. Happy to host you and to have a, have a tour of our new, new space.
Council Brooks?
I just want to thank you for coming and giving your presentation. I did see the story through the news yesterday about the grand opening.
Yeah.
And your interview.
Yeah.
Was proud that, that it's here in Toowolton, that we can support. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, and I, if I may, I just also mentioned that there aren't a lot of free clinics around, and so, especially in the metro area. So I think I consider Toowolton lucky to have one, and we're doing our best to, to serve the community, and especially Washington County. We're, technically, we're in Cloughmas County, but we serve mostly Washington County members, and we appreciate those who look the other way and still support, support us from Washington County.
Questions or comments? I just want to thank you. Go ahead.
No, I just want to say that it was a really great event yesterday, and I'm really proud of this clinic. I remember when Sandy, it was when Sandy, your predecessor, asked me to support, and I was really just happy to do it. I, I didn't even question it. So I'm really happy to see the progress from twenty eighteen, I think, to now, and it's just, it's pretty emotional at the same time, and thank you, Jordan, for everything you've done. Done a great job. Thank you.
I was gonna say, yeah, thank you, Jordan, for all your efforts on making this happen. I remember way back when, doing like the ribbon cutting when it first opened.
Right.
Being there for that, and, yeah, that wide-open space with the drapes and.
That's right.
You all knew back then that, you know, you had to change it, and a phenomenal fundraising campaign. One of the things that I wanted to note that, you know, when I'm talking to Jordan the last few weeks, where I've been over there, is that they never closed during the whole process, that while the expansion was occurring, they shifted over next door and still served patients the whole time, and they have been open in the new clinic for, since April, right?
Correct.
Yeah. And servicing clients, you know, yesterday was just a big celebration. Then the second thing came to mind, at the breakfast, it was mentioned that, didn't a radiologist or something donate a piece of equipment so you can have two more things you can do? One with a cardiologist and one with a sonogram or something that's coming soon?
We have ultrasound, and the radiologist is able to use that to help us with some of our imaging. So it's, it's one of the areas that we want to continue to grow in. We are, and, and your grant actually goes to support some of our lab costs. We can do quite a bit internally, and we've improved our capacity to do additional testing, which is great for our patients because it's faster results, less human error, it costs less at the end of the day, but we do rely on now LabCorp to, to process some of our labs. And so, so the facility will allow us to do more of that, and we expect to do even more in the future. But imaging is a concern. It's, it's just one of the areas that we don't have as much access to. We don't have an X-ray machine, for example, so we all have to outsource that, but we can do some limited imaging with our ultrasound, and having a radiologist on, on hand really helps with that. And he's a recent addition to our volunteer group, and one of the things we're excited about with this build-out is we expect to attract a lot more volunteers, because people want to work in nice places, and we get that, and places that are clean and, and, you know, sterile and whatnot when it comes to a medical facility. So we do, we have already expanded our hours. I didn't mention that, but we expect to do that even further, and all of that is completely volunteer-dependent, because all of our clinicians are volunteers. We only have four paid staff members, and they're all administrative. And so this facility will help us recruit more, which will help us open more doors, which will ultimately help us serve more people.
I know the, when you do the tour of the lab, especially, a lot of the equipment now is instant read. They'll get instant results, when in the past you didn't. And it's state-of-the-art equipment that was, you know, installed, so it's a great asset to the community, you know, Toowolton and beyond. And as you mentioned yesterday, one of the pastors mentioned to me that you are getting more physicians that are now interested.
Yeah.
Because they're not working behind a drape system. They actually have rooms, so.
Yeah.
I'm encouraged to see more physicians, you know, assist folks at your facility.
Awesome.
All right. Well, I appreciate you coming tonight.
Appreciate having me. Thank you.
All right. So that brings us to special report number two, review of the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-nine Capital Improvement Plan. Cody Spackburn Encore.
Thank you so much. Good to see you again. The last presentation, I sat there quietly. This one, I'm going to be talking. So tonight, I'll be providing an overview of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-nine Capital Improvement Plan. As you may recall, last year, I presented a full five-year CIP document for the first time in a few years, and happy to report that I'm back with another full five-year document, so we're trending in the right direction, I believe. I'm a bit late bringing it to you this year for a variety of reasons, but we were able to align the CIP development process with the budgeting for FY twenty-five, so that's always good. Overview of the presentation tonight. So I'll do a quick reminder regarding what the Capital Improvement Plan is and why we develop the plan each year. I'll do an overview of the CIP structure and how you can go about finding information in the document, and then I'll go over a few project highlights from each category. So what is a Capital Improvement Plan? The CIP is a planning document that we use to identify and prioritize funding for the city's big projects over the course of a five-year period, so in this case, two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-nine. Any project that is estimated to cost ten thousand dollars or more, and which also has a useful life of over one year, must be included in this plan. In addition to those criteria, capital projects are defined as new infrastructure, large maintenance projects, master planning projects, new vehicles or equipment, and new technology. So if you look through this year's CIP, you'll notice multiple examples of all of those project types. The CIP is a very important document, and we ask you to adopt it each year for several reasons. First, the CIP helps us to coordinate projects, so as we're developing the plan, staff from multiple departments have the opportunity to sit down together and talk about the big projects on the horizon, and this process allows us, allows us to identify opportunities to strategically plan for multiple projects that may be happening in a specific area. So a good example of that is the Garden Corner Curbs project. That was a large transportation project, but there was also a sewer component, and so being able to identify that early allowed us to combine the work into one contract. The sewer work was done first, then the road project came over the top of that, and that saved a lot of money and time. The CIP also allows us to plan for rate adjustments, so developing the timeline of projects helps us understand whether our, our current rates are sustainable to fund the infrastructure, infrastructure needs of the city, particularly when there are a large mod, large number of projects slated for a particular fiscal year. And as we develop the CIP document, we are creating an approved list for grant opportunities, so there are many grant programs that require some type of approved or adopted project lists, and the CIP is helpful when departments are planning for these grant opportunities. Now, a lot of the projects that are in the CIP are already in one of the big master plans for the city, either the water, storm master plan, the parks master plan, but not every project is in a, a master plan that's in the CIP. So doing this annual update really allows us to have a nice new list of projects without the heavy list and the cost of a consultant for developing that big twenty-year plan, like a master plan. We also adopt the CIP because it's something we need to do for SDC funding, so when development comes in and, and starts to construct infrastructure in the city, this list of projects gives us authorization, authorization to spend that money. And finally, the CIP helps us to prioritize the limited funding we have. This is particularly helpful in the general fund, which is a very limited resource. So each year, we convene our general fund prioritization committee, and that has representation from every department, and we sit down and determine which projects that we want to program into the next fiscal year. So I want to extend a big thank you to everybody on that committee and all the input they provided on the general fund projects for fiscal year twenty-five. So, quick look at the document. The CIP begins with an executive summary, which outlines the how and the why, and then display, displays all the projects in the five-year plan, including the total cost breakdowns, and it does that in a couple of different ways. So the first way that you can look at it is that the projects are listed by category, and all the projects will fall into one of these five categories. So facilities and equipment, which includes all of our vehicles, parks and recreation, technology, transportation, and utilities, and that covers all of our sewer, storm, and water projects. The next section displays the projects according to funding source, so here you will find a specific amount allocated to each fund for every project in the CIP. And so you may see a project listed in multiple places in this section, because, as you probably know, some of our projects are funded out of multiple funds. So, for example, our sewer projects are oftentimes funded by Clean Water Services, but then also sometimes by SDCs, so you'll see those projects listed in, in multiple tables there in this section. After the executive summary, you'll find a worksheet for every project listed in the executive, executive summary tables. These worksheets are very helpful in learning more information about each individual project. So each worksheet includes a project description, a funding breakdown, which also includes total by year and funding source, the project scope, any relevant history and background information, and a project map, assuming that the project has a map associated with it. Some projects do not, such as a master plan or a citywide technology upgrade, something like that, where it's not location-specific. At the end of the document, we have our appendix of unfunded projects. This is a list that includes all the projects that the city is currently aware of, but that does, that do not fit in the, the five-year funding window. So that could be for one reason or another, could be as simple as a project is planned past two thousand twenty-nine. It could be that we're aware of a project that's a possibility that we just don't have enough information yet, about yet. We're still developing the scope. These projects are often included in the master plan, like I mentioned earlier, but the master plans often look out to twenty years or more, and so we want to have some alignment with those within the CIP. And occasionally, we'll get a project recommendation. And occasionally, we'll get a project recommendation from the community that we just need to vet a little bit more, determine how to fund, and do some scoping. And all of these projects in the unfunded appendix are listed by category. There is a typo on this page, which I'm aware of, that will be corrected in the final version. The Browns Ferry Park project there is missing a number. That should read $28,539,479. So here are the category totals for the 2025 through 2029 CIP. Together, all of the projects in the CIP totaled just under $176.4 million, with facilities and equipment projects totaling approximately $7.5 million. Parks and recreation, just over $110.5 million. Technology projects coming in at just over $1.5 million. Transportation projects coming in at $7.65 million. And utilities, just over $49 million. Now, there is one caveat that I want to note about this table and the document in your packet. We have one transportation project that came up late in the process that didn't make it into this iteration of the CIP document. And that project is a Tuauton-Sherwood Road Railroad/Boones Ferry Road grade separation feasibility study, and we really want to include that in the CIP. And so that's for the purpose of considering the feasibility of a grade separating Tuauton-Sherwood Road and/or Boones Ferry Road from the Portland and Western Railroad. That would be about a $200,000 feasibility study, where we would hire a consultant to do that analysis. It would be a partnership between the city and the county, and would probably rely on a combination of TDT funds and road operating funds. So I need to revise several sections of the CIP to get that information in, some tables, including the worksheet and the map. But that information will be included in the draft that I submit for adoption on the consent agenda for the June 24 meeting. And I'll highlight all the key changes in the staff report for that update as well. So with that, I want to go through a few project highlights. I'm not going to list every project in every category, because we would be here all night, and everyone presenting after me would no longer be nice to me after that. So I'll do this by category. So for facilities and equipment, the highest price tag project in this category for fiscal year FY '25, the police station roof replacement for $475,000. That's a pretty straightforward project. We also have a lot of work going on at the Winita Pole Center, including some interior painting for $20,000. And the library will be getting a new light control system, and that's a $35,000 project. That qualifies for ARPA funds, so that's good, not coming out of our general fund there. And these are all relatively recent, or not recent, but in the near future, either FY ' '25 or '26. You know, there's a lot of projects that extend out all the way to '29, but I'm capturing some of the ones coming up in the immediate future here. Wanted to highlight for parks and recreation, the Nyberg Creek Greenway Trail Project. That's a parks bond project for $4 million over the course of fiscal year '25 and '26, and that's to renovate, improve, and expand trails, greenways, and natural areas consistent with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The new riverfront access park for $8 million, that's also a bond fund project. It's programmed over the course of FY '25, '26, and '27, and that's to develop a new river access point on the six acres of land the city acquired behind the pole center. And then we have the Veterans Plaza Project currently under construction. There's $4 million budgeted in the CIP to finish that up, I think sometime next year. For the technology category, there's only one project next fiscal year, and that's Office 365 G3 Suite Upgrade for $78,000. There'll also be a cloud migration project in fiscal year '26 for $200,000, and that's to shift our core services to the cloud. I don't know anything about this stuff, because I'm not a technology guy, but that's the great thing about the worksheets in the CIP, because it gives you a good idea, the general sense of each of these projects. So someone could take a look at this worksheet and get a good idea of what we're trying to do there. And then finally, in FY '26, Info Services plans to replace the public technology in the library for $35,000. And these are all general fund projects. The transportation category this year may look a little light relative to the past several years, because the bond program is wrapping up. We are working on completing our transportation system plan update. So we anticipate this project list and future CIPs to get a bit longer as we identify new projects through the TSP update process, but just wanted to highlight a few things coming up. Mike talked about the 65th Avenue, Boylan Road, Sagert Street improvements projects during the work session. We have tentatively $2.5 million in TDT over FY '25 and '26. That may be upgraded over the next fiscal year or so, as we get a sense of what this project will look like. Then we have the Neighborhood Transportation Safety Program, which will allocate $150,000 per year to neighborhood safety projects nominated by the community. Abby was here last meeting to talk about that program, and this is something we're excited about, kind of a continuation of the bond program on a smaller scale. And then, of course, we have our transportation system plan update, which will be wrapping up next fiscal year, and we have about $200,000 budgeted in the road operating fund for that work. Then finally, a variety of utility projects, and Mike covered all of these in the work session as well, I think. But we have the B reservoir at ASR. That's budgeted at $6.25 million over the course of fiscal year '25 and '26. The large Nyberg Creek stormwater improvement project, that's split between storm operating and storm SDCs totaling around $5 million, starting in FY '25, hopefully wrapping up in FY '27. And then the Martinazzi sanitary sewer upsizing, which is a huge project, split into multiple priorities. And we have $6.3 million in the CIP for this project over the next four years. The majority of this project will be funded by Clean Water Services, with a small portion with SDC funds. So that's kind of a big, high-level overview of this year's CIP. I just wanted to remind everybody that the CIP is a planning document, not a budgeting tool, although it does help us with budgeting as well. But it also really helps us understand what's coming up in the future. It ensures there's no conflicts. It helps us assess staff capacity, and we know things can change from year to year, so this is sort of a fluid document. But it's also a great starting point and a great overview to see what the city has coming up in every department and every category for a five-year period. So with that, happy to answer any questions or take down any input or feedback you might have on the document this year.
Questions coming in for Cody. Helsa Brooks.
I have a couple of questions. My first question is, it's kind of interesting, because we look at it differently, like on our, yeah. So as far as like, when the Climate Action Plan starts happening, where does it fit in this, since it goes to a lot of different pieces of the city? Or will it have its own life, or what?
The Climate Action Plan, I believe, is going to crop up in a lot of different places. And I think as it becomes more realized in the future, I'm hoping that those pieces can be called out in these project worksheets, just so we know what we're accomplishing in terms of the CIP. But in terms of the CIP, there's no specific funding source going to the Climate Action Program. It's just trying to capture that in as many places as we can. So there's no direct link, I would say, between that and the CIP, other than us trying to be clear what we're accomplishing with the projects that are listed in the CIP.
Okay. I just want to make you sure, because you said any plan that is over, what was the? $10,000?
Yeah, any project over $10,000.
Oh, project. Oh, I thought you said plan. Sorry. And then my other question is, with feeding information into it, do you, like, I know that there's department heads for everything, but as new rules come down, or as different things that the city has to accommodate comes through, or as different funding sources become available, how does that feed into sort of the strategy of the planning?
Sure, yeah, that's a good question. I think in terms of rules and policies coming down from the state, if it impacts the funding or the way that we would do a specific project, we would try to probably capture that in the background section of that project worksheet. Or if, say, there was a new funding source that we don't currently have for the city, we would break that out, and that would be a new table in the executive summary, and that would also be outlined in the project that was utilizing that funding source. For example, the Parks Bond didn't used to be a fund that was captured in the CIP because it didn't exist, but now it is. So you'll see that table in the executive summary.
Okay. And then I had one last one was, oh. When I was at the Water Consortium meeting, they were discussing that there's new rules for security, for like, computer security. I'm sorry, I'm tired. I'm trying to think of the right word.
Cybersecurity.
Cybersecurity for water. And I'm just curious, they were kind of talking about, like, that's happening now, so is that reflected anywhere?
I believe there are some projects, maybe one specific project, in the technology category that covers security at our sites. But I'd have to check in with Public Works and with Bates to confirm what projects would cover security at our sites.
Okay.
Here he comes.
Ross Hoover, Parks Recreation.
You again.
Bates Russell, Information Services Director. Yeah, thank you, Cody. We very well answered. We do have several projects that are under cybersecurity. We've putting in for a grant, we've prioritized with the State Home and Security Grant to harden our water facilities, as well as have two grants out right now that are in review for internal cybersecurity, as well as facility cybersecurity.
And then the other one the speaker brought up was about the PFAS, new rules changes. So it's kind of interesting to me, because we, like, look at things so much through policy, and then this is project-focused. So I'm trying to figure out how those two things, where they meet, and if there's documentation anywhere that shows, like, this is where we're at for meeting these rule changes that are coming down from whatever, the EPA or the WAA in that case.
There are definitely places that that could be captured in the CIP, I believe. So for each section of the CIP, after the executive summary, that, you know, it'll have a cover sheet that talks about the category, it'll have that table that captures all of the projects and the totals, and then the worksheets for each project. That cover sheet for each section is a really good place, that we could capture any policy-level stuff that comes down, if it really impacts our project. So each year, if we have something new that we hear about that feels appropriate to put in the CIP, we could put it in those cover sheets for each section.
Yeah, and I guess part of me, too, just so short, you know, we're always into compliance, so I know that we have compliance needs, too, as a city. So anyway, so I just, like, wonder how that fits into the document. Thanks.
Congressman Pratt.
Oh, I just want to thank you and whoever worked on this, because it's such an important planning tool and budget tool, and really make sure we prioritize the right project. I have a specific question, though, and I just looked through this fairly quickly, but the police station roof, I see $475, which, to me, that's probably the cost of the roof. But my understanding was that there was about $1 million worth of total repairs needed in that building. So, like, I think the HVAC system was part of that. So are those things in here, or are they out further?
Yeah, they are. There are multiple projects in the CIP for the, yeah, for the police station, and so the HVAC upgrade is in there. There is a whole project covering interior upgrades as well, that's broken out as its own project. So that's probably where that additional funding is.
That makes sense, yeah. Thank you.
And that's the earmark. We hopefully will get over the finish line with Congresswoman Salinas, right?
Yeah, hopefully.
All right. Anything else for Cody? All right?
No, I just want to say that.
Go ahead.
I just want to say that I appreciate the projects that are just coming up. Like you mentioned, you'll see this in fiscal year '25 and '26, which, for me, it gives me an idea of what's coming up. And I really appreciate that, because it helps me, like, see something that started, then you see the progress, and it completes, and then you're able, I'm able to talk to my constituents about, you remember that project. So I really appreciate that. I'm a more like that kind of thinking versus, like, 20 years from now. I can't even think about that. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you for the feedback.
Thank you. All right, that moves us on to public hearings. And public hearing number one is the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities, otherwise known as CFEC, Parking Reform Changes. Steve and Erin, we haven't seen you guys in a while.
We're back.
Yeah. So I've got a script to read, since this is a public hearing. All right. This is Legislative Land Use Hearing for the City of Council to Consider Ordinance Number 1486-24, Updating the Tuauton Development Code to Comply with Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities CFEC Parking Reform PTA/PMA 24-0002, and Modifying Fifteen Chapters of the Tuauton Development Code, Including Substantial Amendments to Chapter 73(c)-Parking Standards. The proposed amendments are limited to compliance with CFEC parking mandates to repeal minimum parking requirements and address parking lot design, pedestrian connectivity, tree canopy, electric vehicle readiness, and maximum parking requirements. If approved, Ordinance 1486-24 will adopt CFEC Parking Reform PTA/PMA 24-002, three zeros, three zeros, two, to comply with Transportation Planning Rule 660-012-0400. Their criteria for granting a public text amendment are the applicable statewide planning goals, Tuauton Development Code Section 33-070, Plan Amendments, and the applicable goals and policies of the City of Tuauton Comprehensive Plan. The hearing tonight will be conducted as follows. First, the public hearing will be opened, and the city staff will make a presentation. Next, the city council will hear from members of the public who wish to testify in favor of the proposal, followed by members of the public who wish to testify against the proposal, followed by anyone else who wishes just to testify about the proposal. Upon conclusion of the public testimony, individual councillors may ask questions of city staff and any person who provided testimony. After a council of questions, the council will close the public portion of the hearing and enter into deliberations. Upon conclusion of deliberations, the council will consider whether to adopt Ordinance Number 1486-24. Does any member of the council wish to abstain from participation in this hearing? Seeing none, I will now open the public hearing, and we'll start off with the presentation from the city staff. Welcome.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor.
Do you need the drapes closed, dropped?
I'm okay for now, but...
For about five minutes, it's gonna...
Then I'll be blinded by the light. Thank you so much for that.
Oh, the door.
It's okay. I'll do my best, and I might shift around as I need to. Good evening, Mayor and councillors. My name is Erin Engman, and I serve as a senior planner here at the City of Tuauton. And tonight, I am joined by Steve Koper, our Assistant Community Development Director. And you may recall that we introduced this project earlier in the year. Since that time, we've done a lot of work, and we are back to... Since that time, we've done a lot of work, and we are back to present the ordinance for Plant Text Amendment, Plan Map Amendment, as you mentioned, 24-0002, which addresses the state mandated rules around parking reform. Let's see if I can get this to work.
If you can see the screen.
I might need an advancement. Thank you. So for tonight's discussion, we'll start with a summary of what Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities, or CFAC, is, where it applies, and what the state, and why the state is taking action. We will then discuss how this affects Tuolton's Development Code and what amendments are necessary to comply. Then I will briefly touch on the approval criteria and the Planning Commission recommendation, and at the end of my presentation, there will be an opportunity to address any questions of staff. Next slide, please. The CFAC mandate is a direct response to Governor Brown's Executive Order 20-04. It requires updates to land use regulations and policies in order to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from transportation. It is implemented through the Oregon Administrative Rules and the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And while the CFAC mandates also require updates to our more broad land use regulations and transportation system plan, tonight's conversation is centered on our updates to parking reform. Wow, that sounds getting serious. Next slide, please. The legislative program applies to eight metropolitan regions in Oregon, and that includes the Portland Metro region, which we find ourselves in. Next question, or slide, sorry. And the big question is why CFAC? Minimum parking requirements in development codes aren't an exact science, despite our best efforts, and they have been established by surveying nearby cities and consulting transportation engineers' handbooks. This tends to create a one-size-fits-all approach that can result in overbuilt parking lots and become a regulatory burden to businesses trying to locate in Tuolton. So at its core, the state rulemaking aims to make more efficient use of our urban lands by encouraging the development of destinations and closer proximity to one another, and that is also supported in our climate action plan. So the idea is that as development gets denser, it becomes easier to satisfy our daily needs with transit or walking and biking trips. Next slide, please. So what does CFAC include? In a nutshell, it removes minimum parking requirements while applying maximum parking requirements to certain uses in our downtown area and along frequent transit routes. It also addresses parking lot design standards and electric vehicle readiness. Next slide, please. On this slide, I wish to share that the state has phased when these CFAC rules apply, and some of these elements have already taken effect. And while the ordinance before you tonight has yet to be adopted and become effective, if we were to receive a development application, we would administratively apply the applicable Oregon administrative rules to applications submitted after these effective dates. And now we're going to transition into how this affects our development code, so next slide, please. During our initial conversation, council directed staff to comply with the CFAC rulemaking for parking reform and to remove the minimum parking requirements. All in all, these updates affect 15 development code chapters. Next slide. And while I won't read off the next few slides, as you can see, the project required considerable effort by the entire planning team, and I'd like to acknowledge Steve and my counterparts, Keith and Madeline, for their valuable feedback on this project. And then we'll just kind of preview the next few slides. Next slide, thank you. Moving on, this slide highlights the various changes to our parking chapter, which is Chapter 73(c). On the left, you will find the existing sections of code, and on the right are the newly proposed sections. So you'll find that we reorganized subsections for better usability, we cleaned up our numerical sequencing to remove any gaps, we removed subsections that are no longer required under the state rules, and we added a few sections that clarify what CFAC requirements are. And the next slide is a preview of our updated parking lot design standards. You can see on the left that the existing code provides a long list of standards, and they aren't really well organized. It's kind of hard to see, but on the right, we attempted to bundle some of these standards so that they're a little easier to navigate. As an example, standards for surface materials are now bundled under Bullet 2. And we also have added the required CFAC design standards, which are on the following slides. Next slide, thank you. There are aggressive goals to promote electric vehicle readiness, and to slowly phase out the sale of new gasoline-powered vehicles. As such, cities need to help facilitate infrastructure for electric vehicles to fuel, fuel up in the future. This includes requiring electric conduits to service type-two chargers at commercial and multifamily developments, so this is now going to be baked into our code. On this slide, to make more efficient use of urban lands, the state is requiring a maximum parking lot coverage for larger developments, so the parking lot cannot exceed the proposed floor area of the development in this case. And then moving on to tree canopy, the state is now requiring tree canopy coverage of 30% for all parking lots, and for larger parking lots over half an acre in size, developments must provide trees along driveway entrances, and the tree canopy is calculated using the expected tree crown at 15 years after planting. And then moving on to our climate mitigations, parking lots that are over half an acre in size are required to provide a climate mitigation. This means that new parking lots that are about 50 stalls or greater will be required to install either solar panels or additional tree canopy at 40%. And then public projects also may elect to invest in green energy component. And then moving on to the maximum park, or the parking maximums, we do have some presently in our development code going forward. The state will require parking maximums similar to our current condition. They will be applied to multifamily in retail uses in our town center or downtown area and along the frequent transit routes, which is shown in this darker gray area, which is noted as Zone A. So the new threshold is not a substantial change than, from what's currently in code, so we're pretty much compliant with this requirement already, just a little cleanup. And as I wrap up my presentation, I'd like to highlight that the state mandates support a number of climate action plan strategies that will help us adapt to climate change and reduce our carbon emissions. And the project finding and analysis has been included in the packet as Attachment A. This found that the project will maintain consistency with the applicable Oregon planning goals and rules, as well as the Metro Code. The findings also found that the project will maintain the various characteristics of the city identified in our comprehensive plan and development code approval criteria. And kind of wrapping things up and putting a bow on it, at the April Planning Commission meeting, they were able to review our draft code and made a unanimous recommendation of approval, though our chair was not able to join us tonight. So in closing, adoption of this ordinance 1486-24 will amend the Tuolton Development Code to comply with these state rulemakings, or statewide rulemaking around parking reform. And with that, I'll take a pause and open it up to any questions you might have for us.
All right. So the next part of the process is public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to testify in favor of this proposal? There's no one in the room, how about Zoom? All right. Are there any members of the public who wish to testify against the proposal? I don't see anyone in the room. Nicole? All right. Are there any other members of the public that want to testify on this matter? Nope. Still nobody? Get popped in the last second? All right. Now we get to, does any member of the council have questions for staff or any person who didn't testify, since we're basically going to be staff because we didn't have anybody testify, so questions for staff. That's President Pratt.
I understand you're following the CFAC things, but can you explain, effective July 10th, what remove minimum parking requirements citywide means? Does that mean if we have any kind of development, we can't require any kind of parking, residential or commercial?
Right, so this is shown on Slide 7.
I know.
So when we met back in January, there were a few different options that this city could have pursued, and we went with the easiest route. So that means we would remove minimum parking requirement citywide. But as I understand it, developers usually elect to provide parking because it's needed for a successful development site, and usually it's needed as a contingency for their funding to get their construction off the ground.
Other questions? Council Brooks?
My question is, I mean, there's a lot on here, so first of all, thank you for all the work, and I know the parking thing, you know, is kind of a sticking point, but I do also get that there's a lot that the market also controls, and so I'm just curious, because we have had a, a climate plan with a, with measurable outcomes, if we are going to, like, integrate measures in with, does it dovetail with this?
Can you say, say a little bit more about your question?
Sorry. We had a baseline number of, of emissions as a city before we started the development of the Climate Action Plan, so I'm curious with these changes, how they would be integrated, and if there's measurement requirements. Like, if I look at this first slide, where we're supposed to be and where we are is there's a big gap. So in the climate pollution change graph, so I'm just curious about where, you know, where these measures are going to go back to the state and where they come to us to inform our progress to on our Climate Action Plan. Is there a way that it dovetails in the planning?
So I'll try to take a stab at this question, and if it doesn't answer your question, please let me know.
Okay.
Try a different way. So the first answer to the question is, is that there is going to be reporting requirements to the state, to the Department of Land Conservation and Development, and so they will overall aggregate information from the various regions around the state, which was shown on the other slide where these rules apply. So of course, it doesn't apply statewide, it just applies in the seven quote-unquote metropolitan regions. And then as far as what we do locally with that information, I think that's part of the conversation to have with the Climate Action Plan of how does this feed into it, but I think that's a good observation, and something that we will want to integrate.
Thank you, yeah, I appreciate that. So they'll be giving us information from working with this program. Thank you so much. I appreciate all the work, I know, and hopefully a lot of the changes that we do are really good, and the community enjoys them.
Other questions? Council Reyes.
Just clarification from Council Pratt's question, because I want to make sure that the audience out there understands, since we don't have a lot of people here going against anything, so, or talking for or against. Minimum requirements removed just means, explain that again, I'm so sorry, I, I'm trying to translate it also in my, two languages in my head, so try to understand it.
No, that's a great question. So currently, we have a table in our development code, so if a new application came in for development, say it's a retail business, we would require, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but maybe five spaces per 1,000 square feet of development. So now that table, we're removing the minimum standard. So we're leaving it more or less up to the developer to determine what the adequate parking number is for their development, as opposed to telling them what it should be.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. It really makes sense now in my head. I was just trying to make sure I was understanding it the right way, because when I notice on page five, there's some, you have some red areas, and that just showing that it's not as, can you explain that slide a little bit, because I was a little bit, I was triggered by looking at it.
Yeah, no, that's helpful, I didn't really explain what I was showing here. So for this slide, we were talking about how with minimum parking standards, parking lots can tend to get overbuilt. So I was trying to show what a commercial center on a Saturday might look like, and the red shows where there's an abundance of parking that's underutilized, so it kind of highlights how maybe this parking area has too much parking.
Okay. That's how I read it, I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Yeah.
Congressman Pratt.
I, I just want to clarify what we're doing here, because, I mean, obviously, we have, like, I think there's a lot of good things in here, and there's a couple I'm not so fond of, but you've changed things to comply with this, right? So if, if we say we don't vote for this, does that mean we're out of compliance with CFAC, and what is that, what are the implications of doing that?
Do you want me to take a stab at this?
Sure.
Yeah, sorry, to give you the tough one.
No, that's okay, it's a good question, and it's something to consider. So yes, we did get confirmation from DLCD that our draft proposal complies with their rulemaking.
Great.
If we elect not to adopt this ordinance or change our development code, we still have the effective deadlines in which we must comply with the state rulemaking, so in theory, if we didn't apply these rules to development applications coming in, the Department of Land Conservation could probably audit us for not complying with their rules.
Thank you.
I don't know what that means.
All right, other questions? All right, with that, since there's no further questions?
So just to make sure we understand, so this is not going to be a retro, this is going forward for the new, new applications that come in, we would apply these new standards to the, the parking lot, not retroing, like, for example, this, we wouldn't mandate this business to have to give up that, that centerpiece or anything like that.
So I think if I understand the question correctly, it would apply to new development, and there was different milestones for when certain things become effective, but we wouldn't retroactively go to existing park lots and say you're out of compliance with the state rules. However, if they wish to redevelop their site or add new parking, then the new parking would be subject to these rules.
Okay, I have a follow-up question regarding trees, because the new ordinance requires 30% coverage, is that correctly? But what enforcement mechanisms would we have in the city? Because I know that that business there has been fully noncompliant with their trees on Nyberg. I mean, the trees have almost fallen over on traffic, we have no, have, we've had, we have had no authority to enforce that because we have a weak tree ordinance program. So how would we enforce that 30% when we have not been able to enforce current?
That's good observation, so I think there's a few different factors at play. With development applications, we would review it against our current code and condition the development to meet our requirements. Once it's developed, we would inspect it to ensure that the general compliance is there, but I think what you're observing is throughout time, trees may die off or things fall out of compliance, so then it's more of a code enforcement issue where, as some of these inconsistencies are pointed out by the public, our code enforcement officer would go out there to inspect them and then uphold them to our development code standards and tree ordinance.
So this, this revision would provide a little bit more teeth for us to be able to do code enforcement on trees?
I think the teeth may be there, it's just subject to complaint, complaint-driven.
Sure. Again, it, my efforts are because we have low-hanging fruit on the Climate Action Plan that we can implement now and move forward and begin to suck up this carbon in the air just by having a, a well-organized tree program. So here, again, it's just words, again.
Can you, when you say just words, can you expand?
Well, I have been wondering what our enforcement at Tuolton when it comes to tree ordinance, because that commercial property right there has been, their trees have been pretty much in danger. have been pretty much in danger on Nyberg and nothing has been done. I mean, I think just now recently, they've replaced three trees, but for the trees, I'm almost cracked at the base. If a code enforcement was out to look at it, they would know this is a danger tree. Now, I know I'm getting to the weeds, but it speaks to a bigger picture that if we're going to require 30% tree canopy, what's the enforcement mechanism when we don't, we can't do that now?
And I think that's a fair question and a good observation. I guess I would submit that it would require a complete overhaul of our code enforcement system and that we don't do proactive code enforcement, it would require changing the way that we do code enforcement policy-wise. It would entail hiring a lot more staff and it would of course require a policy question for the broader council if that's the way in which the council wants staff to enforce the codes. So I think that you're correct in your observation, but I think it's probably a larger conversation to get more teeth into the enforcement.
Thank you for that, thank you.
Okay. Council Brooks?
I want to make sure if I heard you right, the, if we have the, if we don't pass it, then the rules still apply, but the people that need to meet the rules are going to have less to read about to understand what they need to do. So these rules will help educate builders and developers about what we're doing.
Right, I think you hit the nail on the head, this just makes it more transparent to developers that are coming into the city. Without this, we would refer them back to the Oregon administrative rules and have them address those standards and their findings that they submit to us.
So this will help people that want to build and develop here be more efficient, be better able to plan what they want to do as they come into the city?
Right, it clarifies and spells things out for them a little easier.
Thank you.
Council Gonzalez.
Counsel Hillier, please. She had her hand raised up first.
Okay.
Oh, thank you, and I just wanted to add also for our community members who volunteer on the Architectural Review Board, it'll really help them understand and help us hold, you know, those conversations as well as, yeah, so, thanks.
And so my follow-up question is, so this is not just for commercial, this is lawful residential as well? So as we have new communities come about, we would be, is this also for residential?
Right, so it becomes more impactful for multifamily residential townhouse developments. I'm trying to think of an instance where it could affect single-family housing. I think it's just more or less that it wouldn't be required, but people may still elect to put in a driveway and a garage.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I've got just one. So if Trimat changes their frequent routes, how nimble is this? Because say even applicant, I guess it's going to have to be determined by wherever Trimat rapid routes are at the time of application, because we know sometimes Trimat changes their routes. So what's the impact on someone who, I'm assuming, because it's going to be the same thing, he's not going to be grandfathered, the day you put your application in, you're under those Trimat routes versus what might happen in the future or when you applied and that bus disappears or that rapid transit, then it doesn't matter. So whatever's, whenever they apply, whatever Trimat's routes are, that corridor, that's what matters.
Great question and observation, but essentially, the application would be vested when it was submitted, so Trimat routes that are in service at time of the application would be applied to this application. What's considered frequent is 20-minute or greater during peak service, but it is a moving target.
Right, because I could see a developer coming to town, who emerges one parking requirement, then doesn't foresee Trimat, not that they do it that fast, but they'd have to be in contact with Trimat basically, to be sure their application is going to meet the standards, you know, at the time when they apply, right?
Right, and I think some of it kind of goes off of just land use principles where you tend to find frequent transit along commercial routes. So the idea being that as commercial routes get denser and there's more destinations, those transit lines will be probably better served by patrons, but...
You're putting your density on the transit lines.
Yeah, I think I'd also just add that the transit route provisions really only apply to maximum parking and we've seen very, I don't think we've ever seen a situation where developers tried to build more than the maximum and it's a fairly limited application and so I don't know that it necessarily is the most relevant provision either way, but I mean, I think you're ultimately right that it is based on the goalposts of when they submit the application.
Because, I mean, we've all been beaten up here before about, say, a new apartment complex comes into, you know, where they want to develop, it's on a Trimat frequent route.
Yeah.
There is no minimum parking requirements, correct?
Well, so, I mean, now there's no minimum parking requirement citywide, and so I guess what I'm saying is, is that the part that was effective on December 31st, 2021 is now moot by, which was intentional by application of this part of CFAC. And so the only thing that, where those apply is for maximum parking and it's for a very limited set of uses, kind of commercial uses, where we don't typically see developer, I mean, developers build pretty close to the minimum for those uses as it is. And so I, again, while your premise is 100% correct, I also don't necessarily see it coming up very much and being an issue.
Okay, we'll see. That's what you least expected. All right, any other questions? Counsel Gonzalez.
In this instance, as we're revising, this is only pertains to parking in some, but can we add additional conservation measures to these development codes, like smart controllers being installed in new communities and are we able to, is this the point where we can add additional items for conservation as new communities come in on requiring more conservation technology to be like smart controllers and on and on? Is this a juncture?
I guess that would be a question for the broader council. What we brought to you tonight is a package of amendments that are ready to be adopted without changes. And so I think that, I guess my recommendation might be that it'd be something that would be part of Climate Action Plan implementation. And while it would affect probably some of the similar or adjacent provisions that are touched by the code amendments tonight, that it might be best served as a separate action.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, so I'll go ahead and close the hearing and we can go ahead and deliberate on the merits of the resolution. Not that we have much choice. Council President Pratt.
That would be my point, there, the rules that have to be followed and by adopting them here, we're just making, we're clarifying them and making them easier for people to follow.
So I need a motion for first, second, the whole shindig.
Okay, okay. I motion that we have a first hearing of ordinance, first reading, sorry, of ordinance number 1486-24, updating the Twelton Development Code to comply with climate-friendly and equitable community CFAC parking reform by title only.
Second.
I have a motion and second for first reading by title only of ordinance number 1486-24. Any discussions on those motions? Counsel Gonzalez.
Yes.
Counsel Brooks.
Aye.
Counsel Sacco.
Aye.
Counsel Hillier.
Aye.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel President Pratt.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Ordinance number 1486-24, an ordinance related to land use, amending the Twelton Comprehensive Plan and Twelton Development Code, PTA-PMA 24-0002.
I'll motion for a second reading by title only of ordinance number 1486-24, updating the Twelton Development Code to comply with climate-friendly and equitable communities CFAC parking reform, PTA-PMA 24-0002.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for second reading by title only of ordinance number 1486-24. Any discussion on those motions? Counsel Sacco.
Aye.
Counsel Hillier.
Aye.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counsel Brooks.
Aye.
Counsel President Pratt.
Aye.
Chair votes aye also.
Ordinance number 1486-24, an ordinance related to land use, amending the Twelton Comprehensive Plan and Twelton Development Code, PTA-PMA 24-0002.
I motion that we adopt ordinance number 1486-24, updating the Twelton Development Code to comply with climate-friendly and equitable communities CFAC parking reform, PTA-PMA 24-0002.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 1486-24. Any discussions on those motions? Counsel Gonzalez.
All good, aye.
Counsel Brooks.
Aye.
Counsel Sacco.
Aye.
Counsel Hillier.
Aye.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel President Pratt.
Aye.
I vote aye, the ordinance is adopted unanimously. Thank you, thank you for all this work on this, I know this is a big lift.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right. As Don makes his move over here, so we have another public hearing. Yay. So this is a public hearing for City Council to consider Resolution Number 5779-24, declaring the city's election to receive state revenue sharing funds during the fiscal year 2024-25. During this agenda item, the City Council will discuss proposed use of funds. The purpose of this public hearing is to give community members an opportunity to comment on the use of state revenue sharing funds. If approved, the city will be eligible to receive state shared revenues. The hearing will be conducted as follows. First, the public hearing will be open and city staff will make a presentation. Next, the council will hear from members of the public who wish to testify regarding the use of state revenue sharing funds. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. All remarks must be addressed to the council as a body and not to any individual member of council. Upon conclusion of the public testimony, individual counselors may ask questions with city staff and any person who provided testimony. After council questions, the council will close the public portion of the hearing and enter into deliberations. Upon conclusion of deliberations, the council will consider whether to adopt Resolution Number 5779-24. Does any member of the council wish to abstain from participating in this hearing? All right, with that, I'll now open the public hearing and Don, you can commence your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm Don Hudson, the Assistant City Manager of the city. I'm here to talk about our state shared revenues. So we get a portionment of a number of revenues for gas tax, cigarette tax, marijuana tax and the liquor tax. The liquor tax is actually split into two components. This public hearing tonight is only related to one of the components of the allocation of alcohol tax. We are required under Oregon revised statutes 221-770, or .770, to hold two public hearings in order to receive this allotment. The first was in front of the Budget Committee on May 29th for the possible uses of the funds and then tonight in front of the City Council on the proposed uses of funds. This portion of the alcohol tax that we receive is in the amount of $479,130 estimate for fiscal year 2425. Those revenues are projected into the general fund and they are not restricted and so they are just general part of the city operations. Again, the cigarette, marijuana, gas and remaining liquor taxes are not part of this public hearing, this is just that one portion. I'd ask at the end of this public hearing, you pass the resolution so that we can receive those funds.
Questions for Don. All right, since there are no questions, I'll go ahead and close this hearing and council deliberations may take place, any deliberations?
So if these, if these are unrestricted funds, are we able to use these funds? I know that you said they were part of the, you've already accounted for them in the general budget, correct?
Correct.
Already, so, but they're still unrestricted?
They are unrestricted funds and so we put them into the general fund for the general purposes of the city.
Would we, would we be able to use these funds to build reserves for our park maintenance that we had talked about in the Budget Committee?
At this point, no, they are already allocated into other uses in the general fund.
No, it's going to be a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 5779-24, declaring the city's election to receive state revenue sharing funds during fiscal year 2024-25.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to adopt Resolution Number 5779-24. Any discussions on this motion? This is just a voice vote, right? Or just go through the whole shindig?
Technically, Mayor, because it's on general business, it's a real call.
All right, all right, do the first reading thing. We've got to do all that.
No, it's a resolution.
Oh, okay. Counsel, I was like, I don't want to do all that crap. Counsel Sacco.
Aye.
Counsel Hillier.
Aye.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counsel Brooks.
Aye.
Counsel President Pratt.
Aye.
I say aye also, so Resolution Number 5779-24 is adopted. Thank you. All right, that brings us to items removed from consent. We have one item removed from consent and that was the hydro jobby. So item number three, consideration Resolution Number 5778-24, authorizing the city to enter into a sole-source energy performance savings contract with InPipe Energy, Inc. and Tappany, Inc. And I know Counsel Gonzalez had some questions.
Yes, the old...
Come on up, Rachel.
It is, I'm excited for it as well, but I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that there is going to be budgets to maintain should something go down and I just want to recognize what that dollar potentially could be. And even you don't use that as ROI for, instead of being seven years, maybe eight years because we're building reserves to potential maintenance for the future so that we're not burdening the future council and city managers for this unfunded liability for potential repairs.
Should I speak?
Yeah.
Did a little bit of Excel work, back of the napkin Excel work. Okay, so getting a little bit more into details of the cost. So the cost of purchasing the hydro excess, the turbine itself and related appurtenances is $315,921. So if you consider that over a 30-year basis, breaking that up, that's roughly $10,530 a year. So think of it over the 30-year lifespan of the thing. That can be factored in to our payback period. If we want to completely cut that out of a payback, the payback period can consider it kind of a sunk cost because we know we're going to have to replace it someday. It may not mean ferreting money away, but taking that into account when we look at the return on investment, over the 30-year lifespan of the turbine, based on, like I said, conservative estimates, it looks like the value generated from electricity is $1,514,293. So if we take that, you know, $315,000 off the top, we're looking at electricity cost or savings generation of $1,271,000. So when you put it in terms of that, there's that component. I also would, would consider, and the point is well made, that this would become kind of an asset in our system that we would have to plan for in our rate-making and things like that, like we do any other capital improvement. So there's that, but let's say after the 30-year lifespan, there's some new, different, better technology out there, which in 30 years, there, there may be, so I don't, it may be too soon to say planning for replacement is even something that we, we need to do, but it is definitely a fair point to take into the payback period of the turbine. I don't know if it's necessarily something that we need to write into the contract. I did reach out to our, our representative at InPipe and asked him, you know, hey, if something were to break, like what might it be? What might that cost be? Because there are some potentially unforeseen repairs that could cost in the maybe $5,000, $10,000, $15,000 range, so I'm waiting for an answer on that. I think that that's a really fair question. But just to give you a little more information about the payback period, I figured that I would bring some of that information forward to hopefully help share a little bit more in depth, so. Is there any further questions that I can help with?
No, that sounds totally good, I mean, it's fully acknowledged, I just wanted to make sure that, it looks like, just even the napkin math, it sounds really positive.
Yes, yes.
Question, I mean, if it's a possibility, you know, being an IT guy with all the stuff I sell, you have your regular warranty and if you could ask InPipe, do they have extended warranties and costs? When you're looking at that contract, maybe it would be a savings?
We certainly could do that and see if there's some sort of cost that we pay for, you know, an insurance policy in case it, it were to break down, if there's something that we can pay for. we can pay for.
Or training, you know, training for our own folks. I doubt they're gonna let people, our people tinker with it.
So I mentioned with the annual maintenance and things like that, I was chatting with Nick about this offline in between this, and he confirmed. So we did talk to the company that comes in and does all of our existing control valve maintenance, and they, we believe, confirmed can work and do the pilatry and do all of the, you know, they come in and they make sure everything is cleaned and they grease the system, and they'll replace the little pilatry controls, like there's little, you know, gears and rubber fittings and things like that that get replaced on an annual basis on all of our control valve system. And that's budgeted through our O and M budget every year, so this would be incorporated in with that. They've confirmed that they can probably do that work, so it wouldn't take anything specialized. But, you know, as water systems get bigger and more robust, there sometimes are in-house staff members that do pilatry and controls and things like that. So.
Other questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Counselor Hillier.
Well, Don just left the room, and I guess I was going to ask him about, you know, bring up insurance. So is there something that we could put in our insurance that we have now for some sort of backup that would then, would help address this resilience?
Most all of our city assets are covered by insurance policy for things like, you know, let's say a car runs into a guardrail or takes out a fire hydrant or something like that. So we're covered under things like that, like accidents. For simple failure, I don't know if the city's insurance policy covers things like that. I think there's some limitations. Again, that'd probably be a question for Don or for Deborah, our risk manager. But for things like that, our insurance, we have a schedule of assets that we have under our insurance policy, and this would be added to that likely.
That makes sense, or some umbrella or something, because this is important conversation.
Yeah, but like a maintenance and replacement plan or something like that for those kind of things that aren't necessarily covered by insurance is a potential add-on option. So. To look into.
No, it was the same question.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a great question.
I'd like to propose adopting, make a motion to adopt, where are we?
Number three.
Resolution Number 5778-24, authorizing the city to enter into a sole source energy performance savings contract with InPipe Energy, Inc. and Tapany, Inc.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion and second to adopt Resolution Number 5778-24. Any discussions on those motions?
Yeah, I just would say that we're going to be sure that everything we've discussed goes back, right? To the, yeah, I just want to confirm.
All the favors say aye. Aye.
Don't you have to do a roll call?
No, this is consent.
It was unconceded. Mayor, I'll leave it up to the council, it was removed from consent, so I think the general rule would apply with a roll call.
Who made these rules?
We did.
We did. Counselor Sacco.
Aye.
Counselor Hillier.
Aye.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes, with the understanding that all this is going to be included with the insurance and all that, so yes.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Brooks.
Aye.
Counsel President Pratt.
Aye.
I vote aye also, it is adopted. All right. That gets us through all that good stuff. Now we have the round table that we deferred from work session. Now start with Counsel Gonzalez.
Round table.
Counsel Communications. Counsel Communications.
Thank you, Rachel.
None, other than this weekend's race was fun to see all the kids out there playing. That was just wonderful. So happy that we are, we're so active in our community with activities.
Counsel Brooks.
On Thursday, June 6th, I was at the Key Leaders Breakfast, where were some other people, so let them talk about it, but it was a great event and good to hear. I guess I'll say one thing, the economists came and made a presentation about the economy, the economy here locally, and some of the things they touched about was the cost of housing and, and I just want to say that the market, even though maybe it's not growing as fast as some other markets, is stable here. And coming from a place where it wasn't always stable, he didn't really highlight that, but I have a lot of gratitude for that, so I just want to say that. And then I was also at the Water Consortium meeting. We did elect new officers, and there was a guest speaker from the water, the Federal Water Agency that talked about, like I said earlier, new compliance rules that are coming down from the feds, from the federal government about cybersecurity and PFAS regulations. It was pretty dense conversation, might want to still do a debrief with other people that were there. And then I think I just want to say there'll be Father's Day before next time, so I just want to say Happy Father's Day to the community, Happy Pride. I'm grateful that we're a B city, and I think there's some, oh yeah, and Happy Juneteenth. That's it. Thanks.
Counsel Sacco.
I don't have any communications.
Counsel Hillier.
I do not have any communications.
Counsel Reyes.
Not official communications, but I did attend the Latino Network Business Network on Thursday with Betsy giving a presentation on Viva Tuolton, and I thought it was really well, and was in this room, and according to her, we have sold all of the vendors. So it's going to be a pretty amazing day, so come to Viva Tuolton, and I hope you enjoy the things that they have and the, all the activities. And yesterday I went to the Borland Free Clinic grand opening, and it was a really nice event. I saw a lot of the people that I know also from the community that were patients and also volunteers, and just, it was a really, really neat event. Thank you.
Counsel President Pratt.
I'll go through my fun ones first. Yeah, I went to the Key Leaders Chamber breakfast with John Mitchell, and it sounds like the Fed might not be reducing interest rates anytime soon, which means house loan rates will be high for a while. While the mayor was being knighted, Counselor Brooks, Counselor Hillier, and I went to the Mitch Tardis School Field Day, and thanks for, Emmy Guzman, for giving us a tour, and it was really great to see all those kids out there and having a good time. And then the Blender Dash, I think they were, they were expecting 1,000 kids, and here's, in my opinion, one of the best things about it is my granddaughter said it was the funnest thing she's done all year. So anyway.
You were looking there.
Yeah, I was a dinosaur in more ways than one. Anyway, then the last thing is the R1 Act meeting last week, and so the Oregon Transportation Commission is saying because they are not receiving planned on tolling revenues, they need to look for other revenues to do the I-205 improvements, including the Abernathy, finishing up the Abernathy Bridge and the Rose Quarter improvements, which is interesting since I don't think tolling funds are ever planned to be used for Rose Quarter, but so they're looking at either floating bonds, new bonds out there to cover these costs, or using the State Transportation Improvement Program funds, which are STIP funds that are from federal, the feds and state use throughout the whole state. So our committee was going to ask that they defer this decision and get more input from our committee and others, but their pushback was that they have to make a decision at the June 12th OTC meeting to get federal funding. So I guess the use, especially of the STIP funds or adding all this additional debt is quite concerning to people, but it doesn't look like we have much saving matter. That's it.
Back on June 3rd, I attended the West Lynn State of the City event. It was well-attended, just like ours, you know, it was pretty intimate. Shocker that West Lynn's biggest thing is transportation, you know, dealing with their issues because they're kind of hemmed in, kind of like we are. So a lot of focus on transportation projects within West Lynn. On the 5th, I attended a Zoom session with Metro President Lynn Peterson and some of her staff, along with some of the mayors in the region, to discuss the proposed ballot item in November to change the metro tax on supportive housing and capital assets. They're gathering feedback to decide what kind of initiative they want to put on the ballot. They're getting significant pushback from the three counties and from the not-for-profits that supply the wraparound services. The bone of contention is they want to now extend the tax either for another 10 years or indefinitely, but be able to use those dollars for capital projects that are just a wraparound services, and that's scaring a lot of not-for-profits because a lot of money might be sucked off to go for capital housing projects, which I understand, but we haven't really rolled out our services fully yet. So that's ongoing discussions with Metro, trying to find a happy meeting, if you will, between the two. Attended the Key Leader Breakfast. Mr. Mitchell, as usual, did a terrific job, pretty good attendance, great questions afterwards. As was mentioned, I was knighted as an honorary Rosarian on Friday, and along with Mayor Coway of Hillsborough, Judy Willie, who's been here before, she was knighted, as well as former Washington County Commissioner Bob Terry. I had the very fortunate opportunity to have, to my left, Ms. Oregon, who is from Tigard, she was knighted also, as well as on my right was the National Cherry Queen from Michigan. So it was a fun event, and then, you know, being there for the actual selection of the Rose Queen, she was shocked. She had no idea. She was very excited when she got selected. What's the next thing? Let's see, because I know we want to get out of here. Rosarian, four, five. The ribbon cutting at Boons Ferry, Boons Ferry, at Borland Free Clinic was, that crowd was gigantic. They ran out of tacos. The line was across the parking lot, and so they had tacos and churros and a bouncy house and music. So it was a lot of fun, a lot of tours given. And then last two things is I attended the CFI grant overview given by U.S. Department of Transportation and the Federal Highway folks. I sent all my notes to Nick so he can use those, because I think there's another one tomorrow for the folks who submitted on the first days like we did and getting a second shot at this money, so he'll have everything he needs to reapply for the round one funding, and we'll decide if we're going to run, apply for round two. And finally, just want to wish, get well soon, hope you're feeling better, and hopefully most of you know that Chair Tudy Smith had a heart attack a couple weeks ago, week ago. She had double bypass, so she's taking a little breather right now, but I wish her well, and, you know, she's up for reelection in November, so I have the feeling we're going to see her back soon and in full force.
She has to congratulate class of 24.
Okay, go ahead. Oh, yeah? And so I guess, yeah, Tuolton High School, congratulations on graduation. Hopefully you all have bright futures. There's a lot of job opportunities, there are college opportunities, so it's a great economy to graduate into versus when I graduated, you know, during some of the worst times. And then also I want to, like, next Friday is last day of school, right? So be prepared, yeah, this Friday, be prepared, more kids running around your neighborhood, so be, you know, be extra careful when you're driving around, because you're not used to seeing the little ones out during the day. Anything else? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Too adjourned.
Yeah, you know what it is. I have a motion and second to close the meeting. All the favors say aye.
Aye. All right, you navis, have a good evening. Good night.